Yeah. Are you?
All right. Number five, excuse me. Number five on the agenda is discussion of various ordinances related to short-term rentals.
We've had discussions in the past couple of meetings with regards to what I'm going to call, and what's known as an animal house ordinance, short-term rental regulations, what we would consider quality of life ordinances in our communities. There's been a flurry of Airbnbs or vacation rental by owners going on in our residential communities. While it is completely legal to do, there has been some concerns from the various neighbors throughout the communities with regards to these regulations. So, our attorney was asked to draft some ordinances besides, we have some sample ordinances from other communities as well. And I have it on the agenda tonight for, to us to discuss and to draft something that's going to meet the needs of our community if the governing body wishes to go in that direction.
You want to talk about this, or?
I mean, I, this is something we definitely need.
Uh huh.
Complaints are piling up, we get it. However, we are restricted by laws to how much we really can do with these things. And then it becomes, the other part of it becomes the enforceable side of this. And that's where the citizens have to help us out. If there's problems, we need to know about it. Our police officers, as good as they are, can't be everywhere all the time. It's just not possible. So, if there's a problem out there, and it's Airbnb, and they have to register, because they gotta pay a special tax. Governor Murphy signed that into law a few weeks back. So, there's some issues out there, but we're gonna put it on the books, we'll enforce it, but, you know, if we find out about it, we'll enforce it. But that's the only thing we really can do. We can't stop anybody from, you can't say no, you can't put any houses on that. It's just not allowed. We'll end up in court and we'll lose. So, I think this is a good step forward. Hopefully, hopefully we get good people in here who care about the community as much as our citizens do. And when they get the rowdy ones, they throw them the hell out and give them their money back and send them out of town and tell them never to come back. So, that's what we can, anybody else want to say that?
Yeah.
I could. Go ahead.
Me?
You? You know, we, we went with the above ground, the above water water park. We're trying to take a first step into tourism. We want the town to grow the right way. We certainly don't want animal house. We don't want existing homes to be bothered or disturbed. Nobody wants that. Nobody wants that. If, and like I say, that's why we're gonna discuss an animal house ordinance. If there's a problem, and the police are called, and it's a legitimate complaint, and there's a police report that's made, by all means, I support it. I support that. I would just ask renters, if you're a renter out there, try to vet who you're renting to. If there's a questionnaire, or if you, you wanna question them, or you wanna interview them, this is our town, we all have skin in this game. Try to vet your renters. I mean, we, we have a police force. They are active. They will not stand and tolerate for loud music, fireworks, whatever is going on in any type of house. We don't wanna have families that choose this town for vacation to go away. So, if you're able to vet your renter somehow, maybe, maybe you don't wanna rent to an entire college fraternity. Maybe you don't. Maybe you wanna take a deeper dive into it and take a tighter look at it. I, I wanna step back from telling somebody what they can do with their property, but I do wanna preserve the integrity and quality of life for people that are here, have been here, and are our neighbors. And if there's a problem, you call the police. Okay? That's, that's where I come out in it.
Steve?
Yes. My own two cents. I think it's, on some of the ordinances that I've been reading from other towns and just through our own ordinances, I think it's very important that we put a, something in there regarding excessive use of, excessive consumption of municipal services. I think that would be applicable to a lot of problems we have in town, and if, if the police are constantly being called to the same property, or the, or code enforcement is constantly visiting the same property, that, that it becomes a finable offense.
Yeah.
So, right now, it's not on our books, and I think that's, I think it's very important that we put something like that on our books. And not just for rentals, but again, this is-
It's across the board.
Across the board. It affects a lot of problem properties in town.
Okay. Um, as Committee Chairman McKenna's mentioned, Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, other municipalities have ordinances on the books, and we've been provided by our township attorney some draft ordinances that we should consider. And the nice thing, having an attorney like Lauren, is she works in other municipalities. So, she's provided us with two draft ordinances, one for animal house, and one for short-term rentals. And what I would recommend is, we, we post these on our website, so people may look at them, because they're kind of arduous, you know, you look through them, you know, for instance, the animal house, whereas Township Council seeks to preserve and the peace and tranquility of community for all residents, and to maintain the township as a desirable destination for all persons and families, therefore, this chapter is necessary to curb and discourage those occasional excesses arising from irresponsible rental, rentals. And then the short-term rental draft is, you know, kind of the same. So, what I would recommend is, these are a good step forward on, you know, balancing the wants and needs of the township. So, what I would recommend is, the next township meeting, we put it off for first reading, but in the meantime, have it put on our website, so the residents can see what we're going towards. For those of you who don't know, the way our, our former government works, the way the government works, we have first reading and second reading. So, the first reading, we introduce the ordinance. The second reading, we open up the public comment. So, by then, the residents will have a chance to absorb what we mean to do, and we can get the, you know, the input of both sides. That's my input.
Who's that?
Anyone?
The other one?
No.
Veronica just brought something forward, discuss it out here in the public, is if we do, short-term rentals have to be what?
It says here, new dwelling or segment thereof may be rented or leased for a term of less than 30 days.
So, if we put that in there, that takes-
[applause]
I think that the Airbnbs and things like that, it's-
The open's enough to-
All on the attorneys now.
I really shouldn't be talking at this point. We can talk about it later. My opinion and my recommendation should not be out here.
Okay, fine, fine, fine. I, I will take that under consideration, I think we-
But I, I will post them on the website, so that those that are interested can see the draft ordinance.
Right.
I'm not saying between now and September 26th, there wouldn't be any modifications to it, but what we have drafted to this point, which we've modeled off of other communities in Ocean County, and I will have them on for consideration for the September 26th meeting, which would be first reading. If they're adopted on first reading, they get published in the paper. They go to the next board meeting, which would be October 10th. Upon publication in the paper, they become effective. And publication in the paper is usually one week after the date of second reading. So, that's what, what will happen. And of course, if you wanted to stick around, after we finish this agenda or our next agenda, there is public comments if you wish to make them.
One, I'm sorry, one thing I do wanna mention right now, while these are not on the books, you can still call the municipality or the police department if there is a violation of any, you know, police regulations-
Nuisances in general.
Or nuisances in general.
Noise.
Anything to that effect. You can, you can right now call the, whether it's the police, or whether it's Town Hall, to lodge a complaint, and they will go out and try to enforce if there is an actual violation.
And we'll get these up as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Probably tomorrow sometime.
Well, there's, the, the one that's modeled off of Tom's River, we need to discuss-
Right.
-the potential change, because there's jurisdiction.
Obviously, we have a lot of people in the audience who are concerned about this. I have no problem. Send me an email. My email is on the website. You're pro, what, what you think, good, bad, indifferent, changes you'd like to see in these, in these ordinances and stuff, and we'll take them under advisement. I'm not gonna say, not gonna promise anybody, just because you want it, you're gonna get it. May not happen. But, you know, I've found in my time, and when you talk to the people, the people pretty have, have some pretty good ideas, and if we can implement them and not run into the foul of other laws and regulations, why not? So, with that, we'll end that. End that, and we'll move on to number six of our agenda, which is special use permits, ones for Lacey Elks on October 5th.
Knights of Columbus on October 5th, and Knights of Columbus on December 14th. Lacey Elks is doing a vendor fair. Knights of Columbus is doing a vendor fair, and there are two fairs, one in October and one in summer. I just need a motion to approve the special use permit.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any committee members have any add-ons to this agenda this evening?
No.
Can we can take a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll go right into township.
Yeah, we're going right into township right now. Adequate notice for the series meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice has advertised the Asbury Park press, and the beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing time and place of meeting. Please rise to the, salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
[inaudible]. To the flag of the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Number one on the agenda, first reading ordinance 219-14, amending chapter 159 of Uniform Construction Code.
Northside Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 159 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Construction Codes Uniforms So As to Amend Section 159-4 entitled Adoption of Fee Schedule. This is adjustments to the various fees for building and construction, plumbing, electrical permits, and it's also removing fees related to roofs, because we no longer can do permits for roofing and siding. First reading, can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First reading ordinance 219-15, authorizing the acquisition of block 1676 lots 24 through 26.
Northside Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of block 1676 lots 24 through 26 from Robert and Ramona Dallery in accordance with NJSA 48:12-A1. This is a 60 by 100 parcel, as we're trying to clean up our tax maps in the middle of Gilly Park. So, we are acquiring, yes, 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 we are acquiring it to clean up the tax maps and get everything coordinated. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-247 urging NJDEP to deny access for the transportation of spent nuclear fuel.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, imploring the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to deny access to township roadways to entities transporting spent nuclear fuel. Mayor, would you like to explain this?
Certainly. Okay. As you all know, since that power plant opened, they have been storing the spent fuel rods on site. This township never agreed to that. And in fact, we've had many meetings about that, and have been told that they will move them, and they were supposed to move them to Yucca Mountain. However, that, after $16 billion of your tax dollars and my tax dollars, they decided to scrap that program. So, they're trying to figure out another way, and there's an interim storage, which people now bought, Holtec, Holtec who bought the power plant, is applying for that in New Mexico, and there's another company applying for one in Texas. So, what we're trying to do is prevent them from bringing the rods. The only way they could transport these rods out of Lacey Township is either by a barge, which is gonna cost them a ridiculous amount of money, because they, it's still way too much work, or they would have to truck them out. And the only way right now is up nine and out Lacey Road. And that, when we make that turn there, that's, and these things are not light. These are 500,000 pounds. And when these, if there's an accident there, they spill, they fall over, you got the Forky River School right there, that's the main intersection of Lacey Township, and it would be, it would just tie us up for weeks, because it would take a long time, they gotta bring the special trucks, the whole thing. The only other way to do this, and which would be beneficial to Lacey, is there's a, to put an exit on the backside of that plant, onto the parkway. And then they go right out the parkway, and figure out how they're gonna take it up to wherever they're gonna take it. This, we don't have a say in this, if the New Jersey DEP says, you can do that and take it through Lacey Township, there's nothing we can do about it, but we're just setting the flag up now that we don't want that transported through, they didn't bring them in that way, they brought them in through the barge, and that's how we want, you take them out through the barge, or take them out on the parkway. So, there's not a problem with this thing. So, that's why we've kind of put this in, in, in place. I spent, I gave them springtime, I spent a meeting down at the power plant with everybody, New Jersey DEP, federal government DEP, everybody. And they have no idea how they're gonna get these things out of here yet, but we're gonna stand tall, we're gonna stand, stand loud, and say not through our town. So, this is what this is about.
And I will let you know that our adjoining municipality, Ocean Township, is also adopting the same resolution as well this evening.
Got it.
Motion?
Move it.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-248, appointing bus driver for the Recreation Department.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, appointing an alma bus driver for the Recreation Department. This is Bob Hoptevogel.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-249, authorizing a leave of absence in accordance with the FMLA.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Christopher Meyer under the Family Medical Leave Act.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-250, authorizing an intermittent leave of absence in accordance with NJFLA.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing an intermittent leave of absence for Scott Perkins under the New Jersey Family Leave Act.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-251, awarding a contract, excuse me, for the purchase of a bus for the Recreation Department.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of a 2019 Diamond Coach Bus with options to HA to Hart and Sun. This is a, I believe, a 29-passenger bus that we're ordering.
Yes.
It is $77,198.28. It should be here around January.
Move it. Motion? Second. Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-252, awarding a contract for the rental of loaders.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Jesco Incorporated for the rental of three John Deere 624K loaders with JR B Quick Disconnect Couplers 2018 or newer for the fall 2019 leaf collection, and hopefully, we won't have to use them for the 2019-2020 snow season. Can we have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-253, awarding a contract for sand, gravel, stone, and topsoil.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding contracts for the purchase of sand, gravel, stone, and screen topsoil. This is, and two, every two years, we go out to bid for various 19 different items that, that are on, used on an as-needed basis. This year, the bid is going to Brick Wall Corporation.
Motion? Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-254, awarding a contract for the purchase of bulk, I'm gonna screw this up, bituminous.
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 I told you I was gonna screw it up.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the award of a contract for the purchase of bulk bituminous material to Brick Wall Corporation. Obviously, this is the base coat and the asphalt that you would put on our roadways. This is a one-year contract.
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-255, certifying the 2018 municipal audit.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, certifying to the local finance board that all members of the governing body have received the annual municipal audit for the year 2018. And as you know, there were no comments or recommendations in the audit. We had a clean audit. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-256, establishing procedures for processing of payment claims.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, establishing policies and procedures for the payment of claims, claimant's signature for payment pursuant to NJSA 48:5-16, New Jersey Administrative Code 5:30-9A.6, and New Jersey Administrative Code 5:31-4.1. These are just some various regulations that have changed, and especially in today's technology with electronic signatures, we need to update our policies and procedures.
Move it.
Second?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-257, authorizing the premium payment on a tax lien certificate.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the premium payments on a tax lien certificate to be turned over to the Township Treasurer to become part of the funds of the municipality in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 54:5-33. This is an individual who bought some tax liens, they have not perfected it and gone through with the foreclosure, and the premium payment that they paid at the 2014 tax sale now goes to the township. We're receiving on two tax liens, 2014-57 and 2014-114, the amount of $7,600.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-258, authorizing the cancellation of uncollectible taxes.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel uncollectible taxes. This is property that has become exempt, it's owned by the county, and is coming off the tax rolls.
Move it. Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-259, authorizing, authorizing placement of lien on the prop, on the, on the property for property maintenance issues for block 166 lot.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1013 Anchor Way, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This is for property maintenance issues, failure to mow your grass, clean up debris. The amount of the lien going on the property is $93.02.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-260, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing refund of deposit help for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 219-261, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township Lacey, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills, the amount of $7,660,944.25.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Monthly reports?
For the month of August, municipal clerk's office collects receipts, the amount of $3,523.45. For the month of August, road opening permits were collecting the amount of $5,265. Recycling commodity, the amount of $745. forty-five dollars, truck parking in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Motion to accept the reports as read.
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve membership in Lenoka Harbor Volunteer Fire Company for Joseph Cafrio?
Cafero.
Cafero, okay.
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve a raffle license application for the Knights of Columbus.
Move it. Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm waiting for Veronica to see you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Giuliano, you do need to abstain on the minutes from the August fifteenth meeting because you were not present, just, yeah, okay.
Comments from the committee, we'll start with Deputy Mayor Kennis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if anybody realized it, this week we had two, a quiet opening of two new businesses in town. I'd like to welcome both Aldi and Lidle to Lacy Township. We're pleased that two companies like that thought well enough of Lacy to invest their money here, that's always a good thing for the citizens of Lacy to have four grocery stores within a mile. It's great for competition, and it's great for property values, encourages more people to come to Lacy Township. That's all I have, Mayor.
Before we continue, can I do an add-on resolution, I apologize?
You can, sure.
Okay, it's Resolution two sixty-three, it's a Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State of New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Dennis Riley.
Move it.
Second?
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Now you may continue, I apologize.
I'll start over.
Chairman Giuliano, to reiterate what Deputy Mayor Kennis said, to have Aldi's and Lidle, is that how it's pronounced?
Lidl, like needle. Needle, like needle.
It's Lidl, yeah? It is a great thing, it shows how Lacy's grown, which is a great thing, and it brings a lot of people. I got to speak to a little bit, to the gentleman at Lidl's when I went there, they were from Germany, so it was a little hard to understand them sometimes when they were talking, but I think they have a lot of growth intended for the state of New Jersey into New York, which is a great thing, and they have their demographics, what he was explaining to me, right up, right up, and they know exactly where they're heading to, so I think they're a good company, I think it'll be great. Same thing with Aldi, they do the same thing, but they're already in Tom's River and now came backwards to Lacy, but same thing, they're going in that direction. I had the honor to go to the five K, which was a huge success, and I think next year it's twenty years old?
You are correct.
Yes, yes, yes.
Twenty years, right? So I'd like to thank Heather and the Municipal Alliance and all the volunteers that were for that, thank you very much. The mayor and I had the honor to attend the forty-year celebration for Lenoka Harbor EMS, great turnout, thank you to them for everything they do for us. Tomorrow, we have Friday, is Alex's Lemonade, the fundraiser at Gilly Park, I think it starts at five-thirty, so if you, I've been doing a beautiful Friday night, we're hoping not going to rain tonight, I hope not, but please help join them, it's a great cause what they do for the community. I had also the honor to attend the service for nine eleven at the Elks, it was a beautiful ceremony, somber, but it was beautiful what they did, a lot, it was a good turnout, so that was nice to see, and I want to thank the Elks for honoring all of the people we lost on nine eleven. Of course, school is back, please drive safely, keep your eyes open because, you know, the kids are out there, so please drive safely. And as always, I'd like to thank all of the volunteers in town, all of our workers in town, everybody that makes Lacy Township what it is today, thank you very much, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Chairman Dykoff?
Thank you very much. Recently Congressman Andy Kim held a town hall meeting to specifically discuss the nuclear power plant, and we actually, tonight we passed a resolution urging the DEP to submit guidelines on removal of the spent fuel. It was a good night, a lot of questions were asked and a lot of questions were answered. It's a process, just like the short-term rentals, you know, that's a process, and nothing happens quickly, and it takes a lot of communication, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of input from the public, from government, but we'll get it right. It's nothing that's happening, it's nothing that started yesterday, it's nothing that's going to be ending tomorrow. So again, it was a good night, there'll be another, Wednesday, public information night for Holtech?
September twenty-third, it starts at six o'clock.
Okay, again, if you have some questions about what's happening with the power plant, what's happening with the spent fuel, where it's going, there's a lot of good things happening. Again, it takes time. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chairman Curatolo?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to dovetail on some of the things my colleagues have said, you just can't underscore enough, having two major world-class businesses open up in Lacy Township on the same morning is going to mean a lot of things. Some of those stores, we have employees starting at just about forty thousand dollars. It's going to mean lower taxes for people, their ratables that stabilize. You look up and down Route Nine, you don't have to know that much about land use, our town looks very different, it's innovative, it's new, there's more services, more businesses, more choices for the people, and that's by design. If you go south of us, if you go north of us, I'm proud, I have favorites in this race, obviously, I'm proud of the way it looks on Route Nine. And when there's that much competition with what we all spend on groceries, I think this is going to be a good thing. I was talking to the regional director of Aldi, they have eighteen hundred stores, they're going up to twenty-two hundred in the United States, but the way that launch went the other day, speaking specifically with Aldi's, that's their new look, it looks a lot different than a Towne River store. They're also going to be putting informational kiosks in there, but one of the take-home points that I got wasn't all the pomp and circumstance of the ribbon and this and that, it was when, I was talking to both managers, both the regional managers over there, they have foundations where they have corporate responsibility, involvement in the community, they have foundations for charitable giving, so I'm going to be looking to see how they're implemented in our town, because now they have skin in the game too, they're in our town too, and I want to really hold their feet to the fire and make sure that they're there to support us and our kids. But that's just one piece, Mayor will talk a little, I'm sure, about the above water park that we have, we've just exceeded expectations, over ninety thousand dollars, I'll let the mayor talk about that. We also, as of a few weeks ago, we're number one with days on market, according to the multiple listing service, that's out of all thirty-three municipalities. You have, as far as days on market, I think what I read was seventy-two days, and a couple of years ago, that number was a hundred and forty-eight. So, what it says is, we're growing, but we're growing the right way, there's a lot of our town, as everyone knows, you get off the parkway, make a left, it's protected pine lands, we can't grow, so we're in a really good place here, with property values, you have a confluence of the low, some of the lowest historic low unemployment, female unemployment at historic low, you have interest rates in the fours, mid-fours, low fours, I mean, this, these are pretty decent times, I'm really proud of it, I'm really excited about it, and I think Lacy is just an apex destination, you see it in our housing market, you see it in our business corridor, and you see it more so than you see in other towns, and that's something we could all be proud of. Andy Kim, I want to speak specifically now, all five of us saw Andy Kim speak at our middle school, it was important to have a person from Congress come down here to take home point, I mean, what I wanted to hear, I heard, and what I heard was the gentleman from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission say that each time there's a withdrawal made from that decommissioning fund, there needs to be regulatory, nuclear regulatory permission. What has been brought up to us, and what I want to address now clearly, is that, well what if the, what if the seven hundred and fifty million dollars in the decommissioning fund runs out, will Lacy be holding the ball? I wanted to make sure that's not the case. We were assured by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission that that is not the case, that is Holtech's responsibility, it is not the people sitting in front of me, the people within eye shot of my face or earshot of my voice, it's not the case, so I wanted to make sure of that, I think the mayor will talk more about that, because I saw the mayor was talking, actually talking to that gentleman who ran that part of the NRC before I did, so applaud him and thank him for that. Of course, I want to thank our veterans, I was at the Army of Hope last weekend with the Elks and the mayor, and the turnout that those folks get, it's really not a dry eye in the house, and that dovetailed with nine eleven, they say never forget, I want to add something else, you know, as a Christian, I wrestle with it, but I'm never going to forgive, I'm not going to forget, but I'm not going to forgive either, because, and I know we're supposed to, and it's difficult for me not to, but the mayhem and the slaughter that took place by murdering murderers that day, they don't deserve forgiveness, and so I'm not going to forgive, and I applaud the president and people from Congress who has the, we'll call it gonadmal fortitude, to stand up and start saying stuff. Call evil by its name and judge behavior, or else the lunatics run rampant and free, and we can't have that. I think that's about it, I will be attending, as liaison to our health department, the cancer benefit for young children tomorrow night, Alex's Lemonade Stand in Gilly Park, they're a wonderful family, and again, won't be another dry eye in the house, if you have an opportunity, please, please try to get out there. And lastly, I'm big on our tourism, don't forget our agritourism, we have two farms here, we have Area Fifty-One Farm, we have Argos Farms, if you have children, look, I took my little girl there, I wish she was still little, she's an adult woman now, what can I do? She's, you know, we pet little chicks, and courses over there, I mean, if you have an opportunity, go there, it's a beautiful place. Charity starts at home, support our people first, all right? Nothing but love for you, thank you so much for letting me talk. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, boy, a lot of stuff on my list has already been talked about.
That's what happens when you're mayor, you go last.
Yeah. At the Kim meeting, I did talk to the guy in charge of financing for this, he's in charge of investing seven hundred and fifty million dollars, whatever it is, and I actually conned him out of his cellphone number, I haven't called it yet, but I will. I promised him I would call. Just so that everybody knows, and there's been a lot of talk about this, if you've been following it, the big fight is up in Massachusetts with the Yankee, and they're screaming about they don't have enough money, this, that, and everything else like that, they're going to walk away. One thing you have to remember is that Oyster Creek only had one turbine or power to take down. All these other power plants have two or three, though they were supposed to put a couple more then in the power plant, they didn't because of Three Mile Island. So our seven hundred and fifty million dollars, which started at much more, the day they turned the plant off, very next day they started the decommissioning, they started on that, so they've taken some of the money out of it. So if you talk to the people in the finance, they will tell you that that down there is probably one of the best financed decommissioning funds out there, so we're in pretty good shape there. Now my battery on my phone's gone, okay. Holtech, again, is the twenty-third, come and ask your questions, they're bringing the company, they formed a joint company to do the decommissioning, which is doing the same for the power plant, they're working, this company's also doing work over in Russia, and the two ones in Japan that got hit by the tsunami, they're doing that, they'll have representatives there on the twenty-third to talk about. The WIVIT, which is beyond expectations, when we first put this together, we figured we'd do about seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. We broke eighty-two thousand, just on the WIVIT alone, and we have one more weekend to go, but here's the other part of this, that we increased our beach badge sales by ten thousand dollars, that's five dollars a pop, so altogether, this is ninety-two thousand dollars, this thing cost us a hundred and sixty thousand. When we first did it, I said it's going to take two and a half years to pay it off, then it would be money, we'd be free and clear. In talking to Jim Wyland, who's the recreation director, he thinks he can go over a hundred thousand dollars next year on this, so we're going to pay this thing off in probably a year, and I would think the middle of August next year will probably be paid off, if everything holds true to what Jim is talking about. So we have that. Lacy Day is coming up on the twenty-eighth, so come on out, that's also part of the Apple Fest, we've combined those two, we get an enormous crowd, we get three, four thousand people in there, it's a great time, all the politicians are out there, the school board members are going to be out there, so you could talk to them about that, we'll be there. In fact, I think, Steve, you and I are judging the apple pot contest?
It's news to me.
Well, all of yous were sent invites, so, because they are still looking for more people.
So, so just come on out, it's a good time, and it's just a great way to get to meet your neighbors that you don't really get to see all that often. The grocery wars, I mean, this is just, the prices are going to go down, it's, I talked to both managers, and, you know, it's going to be survival of the fittest and survival of the cheapest, that's what, I mean, four grocery stores in a mile of each other, it's going to be great, for us, and, you know, I talked to the people at Lidle, I talked to the people at Aldi's, you know, they all say they're going to survive this, they're going to have the cheapest prices and stuff like that. Shoprite isn't going to miss a beat on this one either, they're going to get into this war, and of course Walmart's going to get right into it too, to survive, so it's only good for us, it's jobs, and it's lower prices for us, and when we go out and we see other businesses that want to come in, they're going to go, wow, four grocery stores in a mile of each other, you know, we can put up houses, that's one of the things, if you're building, you're looking for, if I'm going to put up fifty houses, is can the community sustain it, because if you're buying that house, you're looking around, what are the schools like, and can it withstand, how far do I got to go for groceries? We've got four in town now, within a mile of each other, so it's going to be, it's going to be good for us. Okay, a couple other things. Let me do my rant on Trenton right now. I won't say what I really think of them, but Governor Murphy is now allowing driver's licenses for undocumented workers, he wants to push that through. I'm sorry, I'm against that, just, I'm not against immigration any way, shape, or form, you got to come in the right way, you got to do it the right way, I feel for these people, but we got rules and laws that have to be abided by, so let's do that. And then he did another one, and this one really, really, my wife walked out of the room because I started yelling so loud. He gave twenty million dollars for extra schooling to, I think I want to say, some schools in Bergen and Middlesex County. Twenty million dollars, and they cut, I don't think there's a school district outside of Lakewood, I don't think there's a school district in Ocean County that didn't get cut on their schooling, and twenty million dollars, and it's for all-day kindergarten or something, I mean, it wasn't, and they already had it, it's just extra money that he, I don't know where he found an extra twenty million dollars, so, I mean, I'm sorry, but, you know, Lacy had to lay off, lay off the aides, and they bring them back, and it's, this is just not right, and we got to wake up and get this guy out of here. I talked about the Raj, you know my feeling now, we're going to stand tall and protect this town, no question about that. The parks, on Tuesday after the grocery war openings, Deputy Mayor Kennis, myself, Veronica, and Dan McGill, Director of Public Works, we toured every park in town, and I mean every one, because we wanted to see what they looked like at the end of the summer, and what we have been looking forward to do next year, cost, things like that, and see how they were. They were in pretty good shape. One was, one was, we have a problem with, and we know we're going to have to deal with it, but the parks, Plume Park, which gets beat up really bad in the summertime, was good, Hebrew Park is in good shape, you all know what we're going to be doing with Gilly Park after, after Lacy Day, we're going to close, not the park itself, but the playground equipment, because we're taking that out, we're redoing it, and so it's going to be closed for about six months, we really can't do a whole lot of work in the wintertime because we got to put the special floor in first, and that, we got to have some warm weather for that, so we're going to get rid of that. So the parks are in great shape, we've got a few things we need to work on, one park we need a lot of work on, but we're going to work on that. So with that, that's all I have to say, I think we've talked long enough, opens up to comments from the public.
Anyone?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you, Tom.
Okay, hi.
Hello.
Lynn Tabucho, Max and Jar Forky River. I want, I would start off by saying that I live in and work for the Township of Lacy, I am also on the CWA Bargaining Committee representing the White Collar employees. We have been in contract negotiations for almost a year now, in the spring, it looked like we were making good progress towards a settlement. Instead of making progress at our last session, your side put additional proposals on the table that would just further delay any kind of fair settlement. It was rather shocking since the new things brought up had never been mentioned to the union as concerns or areas in need of change. I know I speak for all of our members when I say that we are extremely offended and concerned at the township's attempt to eliminate retiree healthcare and family healthcare, and family healthcare. We are all dedicated, hard-working people who care about our community. It is disappointing to see that our township committee and mayor are trying to hurt us and our members in this way. Taking away retiree healthcare will mean your highest-paid employees will not retire, and that makes no sense. It's also important to mention that the cost of local government healthcare is expected to go down approximately four percent next year. It has come to our attention that so far the township has paid the new attorney nineteen thousand dollars, in addition to whatever was paid to the prior attorney, and if you ask us, it's a waste of township money. We hope that you encourage him to get serious because we think there is no reason we can't reach a settlement quickly and save the township a ton of billable hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is William Feiger, and I live at eleven hundred Orlando Drive.
Okay.
I've been here for about seven years, I have to read up this.
Sure.
I'm here to express my concerns, the Airbnb rental home that is located next door to me at eleven oh two Orlando Drive. Prior to this house becoming an Airbnb rental, it was owned by and occupied by a family, Ryan, who eventually went bankrupt. For the past four years, it has been vacant, and recently it was purchased by an LLC from Lakewood who purchased it for three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, a home just shy of five thousand square feet, which was on the market for probably seven. Okay, the owners, who have never resided at the residence, told me, and I spoke to both of them, I have them in my house, and expressed my concerns, told me that their plan was to flip it, but then they said they were going to rent it, and then all of a sudden it became an Airbnb. Originally, it was advertised for eighteen-plus guests for about eight hundred dollars a night. The first weekend it was rented brought a rude, large crowd of people who were loud and partied all day and night, and had the audacity to throw gum and cigarette butts over the fence onto my lawn. The Forky River police were called, but they said there was nothing they could do unless it was after ten PM. Following that day, both of the LLC owners, Joel and Moshe, came to my house, knocked on my front door. Not sure how they knew, we called the police, but they came in with a box of donuts and a Wawa gift card for fifty dollars, that's a sorry, I handed it back to them. He gave me his cellphone number and asked me to call him, text him, anytime that there was a problem at the house. I did express to him that the amount of people he was advertising for basically was an invitation for partying, and quite honestly, that is the main reason people rent Airbnbs. I'll try to make this clear.
Take your time, sir.
Just three weeks ago, there was a wedding held at the house, approximately thirty to forty guests, there was a large tent that encompassed the whole entire yard. I texted the owner and asked what was going on, the limit was eighteen. I was told that the house was booked before the rules were vetted on the website, that wouldn't be possible, because as this group had already rented the house previously, three weeks before, and I met the guy second time, I said, oh, you liked it so much, you came back, now they have a wedding. Can I have that forward? Just so you know, if you want to pass this around as I'm talking, I'd appreciate it, that's all the pictures.
Thank you.
Okay, during the past summer, each weekend brought in renters, young people drinking conveniently inside, I know this because during the morning of the checkout, parents' car pulled up in the garage, and put all the garbage bags and the empty beer cans into the trunk of the car, and then left, which is obviously a way of protecting the underage drinkers. During another weekend, one of the young men made a rude comment to me, go inside, old man, and continued to stand on the porch with his arms folded, ready to fight. My son and his friends came over to attest to that. His friend sent me out to him, stop Connor, leave him alone. Okay, in summary, my main concerns are the following, different large groups every single weekend, I am concerned for my safety and the safety of my neighbors, garbage placed on the side of the house and in front of the house, it sits there for days, and renters fill plastic bags filled with garbage, you can see the pictures that I've attached, hence the odor is terrible. Hence, the odor is terrible, and then we have rats running across the street eating the garbage on the side of the house. Okay, walked out the other day and one ran right across my feet. Cars are parked three deep, six in a row in front of the lawn, causing difficulty in pulling out my driveway for other people riding bicycles down the street. My question is, how does the town allow this to happen? Are there no stipulations in place to control this? The owners have never resided at the house, the area is a zone for a single-family residential, and if the owners have never resided here, it wouldn't be considered a commercial, a business property. The home is advertised with all the bells and whistles, but please don't step out onto the dilapidated perilous deck, which is about ready to breach and fall into the water. Even though the LLC put a lock on the gates, no one goes on the dock, I have witnessed renters lifting small children onto dock to fish. Do me a favor, go to the website, the Airbnb website, look up the waterfront mansion. The house is advertised now for 14 guests, six bedrooms, 10 beds. Then go to, scroll down, go to the neighborhood on Joel's rules on the house. Important, please note, he says, we do not allow large groups for parties. Loud music and large parties will not be tolerated, but yet they go on every single weekend. Tonight, as I left my house, five cars had aired, kids carrying them beer, already partying in the garage with the music running. Okay, now they're renting it for three days. Now I get another weekend, though. Okay, and other neighbors are here, they can all attest to that, everybody took pictures. It's out of control. And I'm not saying, you know, the thing with a 30-day rental is fine, but this has got to stop. I mean, it's like every weekend, cars and cars and cars, and just partying all the time. I'm not saying that I have anything against partying, but Jesus Christ, we all moved down here and retired and relaxed, and now we've got to put up with this every weekend. It's not even comfortable to sit outside. Alls are here, it's F-bombs and everything else coming from next door. People throwing cigarettes into the looms. So, you know, I'm just hoping, you know, I spoke to code enforcement and zoning board, they were going to look into the matter, and basically got to run around that the owners can do whatever they want because the house is large enough to do so. So at this time, I thank you for your time for listening to me, and hopefully something gets done about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we look at this while, you know, we'll get it, we'll get it. Next, yes, sir.
Have more pictures.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mark Lizney, 1100 Ebert Court. I'm the other side of the Airbnb. A lot of what I was going to say is already been touched on, so I'm not going to have to read this whole thing. As Bill said, the house advertises for 14 people. That's a party every weekend. If you go on the website and some of the pictures, you'll see there, they have air mattresses. One of the bedrooms has glass doors, it looks like it was a den or an office. That's not a bedroom. An air mattress is not a bed. I'd like to see if we can get limits on how many people can occupy that house, along with how many cars can be there. There's not a lot of parking around there. Across the street is Oyster Creek, okay? That's no parking along that whole side. So people park all haphazard. You'll see there's one picture there, I'm on the corner, you can see the car is very close to the fire. Again, I'd like to see if we can get limits on how many people can be in there. That can't be legal, what they're doing with these bedrooms and these beds. And again, it's just an invitation to party every weekend. So, thank you, that's all I got right now.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else? Anybody else on this side?
I was going to talk about that.
Come up to the microphone, please. State your name, please.
Manuel Hughes, live on 1106 Orlando Court. I have just one comment. I heard through a grapevine, I don't know how true it is, Laura's maybe known this, they put limits on how many times you could rent per year. So three times per year, I don't know if the towns are doing that, something to look into. You're saying 30 days, I'm saying three times a year for a B and B. Not sure if that's.
Yeah, I think it's within different states, there are, you're seeing different states, different towns within different states regulate in that fashion, and some of it's being mitigated right now.
Yeah, before they, you know, this corporation in Lakewood comes out and buys more houses than we have, more and more B and Bs like this in our area. Yeah, thank you.
We're going to look at this very hard, I promise you that. Okay, anybody else on this side? All right, let's go on this side. Who won this lady in the back, that red-haired lady? Red-haired lady, here we go.
Hi, guys, thank you so much for hearing me today. My name's Lee Emmons, I'm also part of that Forkett River Beach area.
Okay.
One of the concerns we also have is that same person has bought two other houses right on Beach Boulevard, 402 and 605, and they are renovating those houses. 402 is not even on the market right now to be sold. So we're trying to find out, is this going to be another B and B coming in that we don't know about?
What is your address, please?
613 Beach.
Okay.
And the other house is 605, and the other one's 402. These houses currently, I know 605 is being renovated.
Mm-hmm.
402 was finished about three weeks ago. We're wondering if it's going to be another B and B problem.
At this time, we don't know.
They don't have to disclose.
We'll have to, we'll monitor it as best that we can. Obviously, we'll take, we take this problem very seriously because it's on the agenda for tonight, and we talk about it in the executive session because there will be regulation, we can do it back there, so. All I can tell you is we're going to try to do the best that we can within the legal grounds. So that's all, all we can do.
The other point I'd like to bring up is, if it is at all possible, I do realize Beach Boulevard is a county line road, can somehow we get hidden driveway signs up and speed bumps put in? People are coming around that bend on Beach Boulevard, around the 605 house, I live on 613. You take your life in your hands, because these people come around and they are not doing 35 miles an hour, they are hauling at least 60, 65, heading up over that bridge. They're coming back over the bridge at 60, and quite a few people have few accidents there.
The speed bumps, no, can't do that. The hidden driveway signs, yes, we can, we can do that, and.
That's the county, because it's a county road, so we'll send them out to the road department and county.
Right, and I will talk to the chief of police tonight about getting more, having the patrol a lot harder down there.
Okay, I mean, they're more than welcome to park in my driveway. Please, they are more than welcome. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on this side?
There she is, back there.
Oh, there she is, okay. Unless she's coming up.
Hi, how are you?
Good. State your name and address for record, please.
Gillian Marcus, 715 Maple Road, Lenoka Harbor.
Okay.
I'm here to talk about the Airbnbs and the VRBOs. I'm not with the Orlando crew. We have a big group in Florida back there. I'm a part of the Lenoka Harbor Maple Road crew, but we have the same thing going on with a VRBO that was bought by my neighbor who is a real estate agent, is now renting it out as a summer vacation rental. Needless to say, every few days, new strangers checked into the new hotel next door. I live, or I purchased my house on a quiet cul-de-sac, you know, in hopes of raising my family and having some peace of mind, you know, that my kids could be in the street with, you know, a little more ease, just because of the neighborhood itself. Definitely not that way anymore. It's a quiet cul-de-sac in a residential neighborhood, it's not zoned for business. I understand that, you know, with some of the laws that came through in New Jersey, it made it legal to do, but it's just not right. You know, and I just feel like, you know, I know people have the right to rent out their homes and do whatever, but where are my rights? Like, where are our rights as citizens in this community? Just try and tell, live your life, raise your children, you know, and it's just, it impedes on my quality of life, I'm sure it impedes upon yours, it impedes on my peace of mind, my property value is down the tubes. Who would want to buy a home next to a hotel? You know, it's just, it's absurd, like, who would even? It just baffles me, you know, and it can happen to any of us. Imagine, you know, your neighbors can turn their homes into a VRBO all of a sudden, you know, different people every three, four days, and, you know, none of us are immune, you know, from it, it's, it's here. So we have to do something, and that's why we're all here, you know, tonight, and I know you're talking about putting different sanctions in place, the 30-day, Mrs. Larray, I don't know if I understood that correctly.
Yeah, that's what it said, that, that you would not, one of the ordinances that were considering the draft wording says no less than 30 days.
Okay, I think that would be a great idea, you know, one of my other problems with it was, we're not vetting these people in any way, we don't know who they are. I have a four-year-old daughter and an eight-year-old son. Are there sex offenders that are in these, this home next door, watching us in our backyard? Who are they? The one group of people had a pet, because the pet bag doesn't have its shots, you know, like, I almost hit it pulling out of my driveway, got loose, you know, like, I don't know. And it's just not safe. And unfortunately, I think it's going to take, there's going to be a big accident, there's going to be a huge problem, and then we're going to realize, you know, something has to be done. So I appreciate you guys looking into it, you know, it's just something I never thought I'd have to worry about, but it's here, and I'm willing to do, and I'm sure everybody here, you need a panel of people to sit and help write some law, you know, whatever it takes.
All I will tell you is, put them up on the website, send us the emails, your comments, thoughts, yes, no, this could be added, that should be added, we'll take that all under advisement. Again, we can only do so much here, unfortunately, within the law, that's why we got Lauren here to help us, help us navigate this, and this is tough, this is not easy to do this, and we're going to do what's right. And that's all I can tell you, is we're going to work very hard to get it, we're going to try to get it right, and if we don't get it right the first time, we'll get it right the second time.
I appreciate, I just wanted to add, you know, something, you know, like, some of these LLCs that are coming in, they have no vested interest in this town, I don't think. You know, I was born here, I was raised here, I worked here, the school system, you know, we're the fabric of this community, and, you know, I'm so happy everybody came out tonight, I'm so happy to see, I'm like the Lacey chatter, that I wasn't the only one that felt like, what is going on? So I appreciate everybody, you know, speaking up, you know, it's our right as a citizen and, you know, the United States of America, so, thank you, everybody, for what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark, Langell, 712 Maple Road, Lenoka Harbor. I'm a neighbor, the lady just spoke very well, just pretty much summed it up. Just want to add a couple of things. I came from Middlesex County, it's funny you're talking about the governor. I came, moved down here 30 years ago, local guys, good old pilots, we fished with them, had a great time, I built, built the house new, Bob Lang, everybody knows him, local builder, come down here for this, peace and quiet. I, I get upset because I pay more taxes for sidewalks, underground utilities, I can go right outside from Lenoka Harbor and pay $1,000 or less. The B and B thing, it's upsetting because, listen, I have a very attractive wife, very proud of, I don't want to go to work worrying about somebody moving in, you know, week after week after week. So far, it's been great, but here's the problem, it always starts good, it always starts real nice, then people get in, they start moving in to get caught, they tell this, they tell that. Before you know it, you got a hotel, okay? Someone sarcastically said this to me, and I don't want to repeat it because it was someone in this township, and he said, you know, people rent, don't you go to Wildwood or don't you go to Cape May and rent a bed and breakfast? I said, listen to what you just said. Yeah, I take my motorcycle to Cape May, I take my wife to Cape May or Smithville, whatever, we know what it's about. You go rent a bed and breakfast from where, Angel Land, wherever you want to go. You know what that's about. You don't build a house in a cul-de-sac with sidewalks and little kids. She's got little children, they all have little kids running around. It's a beautiful cul-de-sac. Everybody in our cul-de-sac have been there for a long time. And to see it change, it's upsetting, because I'll tell you, I'm tempted to move, I love Lacey, but if it keeps on going on, I've got no other choice, you know, I mean, I'm right before retirement soon, you know, I hate to leave Lacey, but I appreciate you guys giving the 30-day thing, I just hope you stay on this, just stay on this, because this town can get ruined. I mean.
We're well, we are well aware of that, we're not going to let up on this, we're going to, we're going to do something, hopefully it'll solve the problem, if not, then we'll look at it again.
Yeah, I know the laws are in, and I do appreciate what you guys are trying to do. It made me feel good coming in here, now it's here, tapping out, and I heard that, I said, wow, I'm starting to acknowledge it. A lot of people, a lot of towns, they just, hey, I appreciate you guys are listening to people, and just hope that you guys know that we do appreciate you guys doing something about it.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, Byron Griffin, 717 Maple Road, Lenoka Harbor. After finding out earlier this afternoon that my grandfather was placed on hospice, this is the last place I thought I would be this evening. But this is a very important topic, it's something that the community has obviously come out in droves to address. There's a lot of concerns. Not everybody is a responsible homeowner, not everybody will properly vet their tenants, not everybody will understand the due diligence that goes into properly managing and renting residential properties, whether it's in this township, the township of Belmar, Point Pleasant, Brick Township. There's a lot of communities that have adopted animal house ordinances, a lot of communities that have looked at abandoned property ordinances, a lot of other communities, including unlimited to Tom River, which I heard mentioned this evening, have adopted a ordinance on my reference is 454017, which is governing short-term rentals. There's a scenario in play, and it's one that's obviously bothersome to the community. And I'll disagree, I wouldn't want it next to me. Why would you want an animal house next to you? Nobody would want that. So I would, I would encourage the council to look to adopt something. This is, this is something that obviously is of importance. And if it's adopted and adopted the correct way, it avoids liability, it avoids litigation, avoids the ability for the township to be in this, it's under some type of lawsuit, that's then going to impact the community worse because it's going to raise everybody's taxes as litigation is drawn out. I want to bring your attention to Tom River's ordinance. We had discussed the fact that it's 4595. It says that short-term rentals are prohibited, no dwelling or segment thereof may be rented or leased for a term of less than 30 days. That's the way Tom River drafted. They obviously saw it was a concern, and they drafted one in accordance to the same. But they also added 335-22, and I bring that to your attention because there's exceptions. The exception, notwithstanding the restrictions set forth in 335-21, states that a minimum rental of three days are permitted during the period of April 15th through September 15th on Barrier Island. The reason I bring that to your attention is because Belmar, Point Pleasant, Tom River, Brick Township, obviously now Lacey Township has, has its concerns. To put certain restrictions in play that could result in litigation and reliability, you know, may need some additional verbiage added to it, we obviously don't want to go into this blind. We don't want to put an ordinance on the books that may be rebuffed or refuted or have an inability to be able to be stood up in court due to it being deemed constitutionally vague or something along those lines. We've seen that happen time and time again. Now, as a public official here in Ocean County, I pride myself on the job I do. I go around 33 municipalities and I put out fires, nuisance complaints, a various array of adverse public health conditions, aesthetic appeals, different things that people surface. It's, it's important that the people are heard. They came here tonight, they wanted to bring to your attention the problems that they're complaining with. And if it, if it's implemented correctly, I believe that, that not only an ordinance on the books, but also potentially a quality of life task force should be considered. Township of Tom River put it in play, it involves the chief of police, the health department, code enforcement, fire bureau. They get together once a month, they discuss the issues that are surrounding their rentals, that are surrounding the community as a whole, whether it's aesthetic appeal, whether it's code enforcement concerns, whether it's adverse public health conditions. There's, there's things that go on that obviously need to be addressed, and by putting together a task force, not on the dime of the taxpayer, volunteers that are willing to come together, come out into the community, and be a part of making the lives of the residents better. I for one know that I had plans on bringing this forth to the Board of Health if yesterday's meeting actually had a forum. Unfortunately, it didn't, and therefore, the meeting was postponed. Unfortunately, it didn't, and therefore, the meeting was postponed. I sit on that board. I, I pride myself in, in what this community is all about. And, and I moved here for a reason. I've, I've lived in several different municipalities and townships here in Ocean County, five to be precise. And Lacey brings something special. There, there's a feeling of family here, community, best parts I've ever seen. It's a, it's a desirable place to live. So it is important that the quality of life remains. And if the quality of life task force is something that I have the ability to personally man and be a part of, it would be my pleasure to continue to serve the community in that capacity. I would, I would petition the council to allow the townships, Board of Health, to be permitted to invite the chief of police into our next meeting, along with the code enforcement official, Mr. Downing, I believe is here still, still retired, I'm not sure. Along with the, the chief of the fire bureau.
We don't have a fire bureau here.
Well, the state of New Jersey does it, right? So if, if we could have a representative from the state come in and, and address some of these things. 18 people in one house? Unacceptable. Completely unacceptable. Two to a bedroom, and that's it. I don't care how many square feet a home is. A bedroom is a bedroom. How many people you have in a bedroom is, is important. To fill air mattresses up, I don't disagree with these folks on Orlando. It's, it's a difficult thing that they're contending with. And if, if people are coming in, in droves to look to enjoy the things that Lacey has to offer, it should continue to be the enjoyable community in which not only the residents are enjoying, but also the tourist population. So I do ask the council to consider this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side? Round one more time, anybody? Yes, sir. You want it? No? We should time for all comments.
Robert Renting, 201 Clearwater Ave. So I stand for you guys after three weeks of phone calls to the public works. This phone call is in total. Before we got Mr. Miguel on the phone, he mentioned to us several times they were sending out supervisors to our house. They consider that a normal drainage problem, water runoff as a handle. This problem came into effect after you guys let the, the office building down the block, tear the road up. I don't know what they did, but it's pushing more drainage down the road.
Can we keep these pictures?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The house you're looking at with the big pedals, the neighbor to that, which is two houses opposite me, we have curbs the rest of the way out. My house has a drainage ditch that runs into the water. I don't know the, how, how you guys feel and how drainage works, but in my opinion, as a homeowner, not a, not a professional, the curb should go the rest of the way to the drain. Because what's happening is it's hitting curb, running down the road, hitting my neighbor's grass, which is falling, and my rocks running all the way down their yard, hit my rocks, washing my rocks, out from under my shed, down the lagoons to the point where I have to put a barrier up because it's throwing water into the woods I had docked in my house.
Sir, can I see what, what address?
201 Clearwater Ave.
Drive. Drive.
I'm not used to poking the stuff.
Got where you live?
When we talked to Miguel today, he, he, we went, he went backwards with my wife a little bit because she's able to get on the phone as much as you are. And when we brought up the fact that why can't it just go to the drain? He told her, he didn't, he tells us he's been there, he's looked at the property, but if I'm going to look at a drainage problem, the first thing I'm going to do is look for your street. And your street is on my property. So when we brought that point up to him, he said to my wife, oh, it must have been a mistake. What, you've never made a mistake before? We both work in a very professional environment. I don't appreciate the way she spoke to me today. I'm not, I, I, we suspected a better answer, you know? He tells us that this is not a town issue. He says, normal runoff. It's only like that when it rains heavily. It's not like that when it rains heavily. It's like that when it rains anything more than, than a shower.
Excuse me, one sec. You know, so I have the, it's weird, I have the same problem on my street, and we're going to be addressing it in a different way. Sometimes with them drain off pipes, this is what I'm learning, speaking to different engineers, a tide has a lot to do with it. Water can only go a certain degree. I mean, I know this was probably that bad rainstorm we had.
That's actually three of these storms.
The water came in my garage. So I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, you had the...
The water's not making it to the drain.
Okay.
I could show you in one of those pictures, if you, the picture looking at the street, you can see the drain at the top corner, which is the opposite corner where the water's coming from. The problem is, it's not making it to the drain. So I'm getting runoff from everything coming down the block.
Is the drain clear?
Oh, the drain's clear. It runs straight out. I have drain on both sides of the road. And this was also a minimal problem until they dug the road. So I'm also not an engineer, but I do realize that it wasn't a problem. Me and my wife were blessed enough prior to the first half four years, we moved up this, we moved this our first time.
Do you have the drainage instrument right before your house? Is there a drainage...
Keep it alive with the gentleman.
Is there a drainage instrument right before your house with a pipe in it, or?
There is an instrument on the, on the opposite side where the water's coming.
Okay.
And what I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm thinking is...
There, there was some work done between the two businesses that front you.
The origin care.
Yeah. Well, whatever it is, I'm not sure what it is yet.
It's supposed to be origin care.
Yeah, but there was some drainage work done, and I do believe there's some continuation of drainage works that needs to be done there on that site by the developers, of course. And I know that, that, that was being looked into.
The problem really, obviously, heavy storms, we're going to get a problem. But the problem really started after the, the street got down.
I'll have to see what's going on there as to if they completed the job or not. I can send the engineer out to take a look.
This is going, we've been, my wife's been on the phone for three weeks with people, and she can't even get a phone call back when she was here.
Wait, you should have called from the supervisor.
She's been on the phone. I have documented eight phone calls, and not one returned on the phone. Today, she spoke with your director of public works, Mr. McGell.
Yes.
And he was less than professional yet. I don't think that the question is they asked my wife if she's ever made a mistake. If they made a mistake, that's fine, well, not to, and take care of it. But the question's not to be pushed onto a professional female that, what, you never made mistakes.
I can have our township engineer come out and take a look at it because they're going to have to survey, when I say survey, I mean visually survey, look at the site that, the old shark fin, as I'm going to call it. And then there's a, I believe, a drainage between that and Bob Square D L 2 that was giving us some issues, and have them take a look at it to see if it, everything's being done in accordance with what was approved.
Engineers, that, how it all works.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I'm no engineer either, so I couldn't tie.
I can tell you, I can look at my house and see my, my property being worse the way that I've been before.
Right. I see it in the pictures.
And I can look 60 feet to the other side of our property and see the drain not getting any water. You know?
Okay. We'll definitely take, that's not a problem to have our engineer come out and take a look at it to see? And we might have to do some surveying to see if the grade changed?
We're not, we're not, we have no problem with waiting for a solution.